Calling to order the Monday, November 18, 2019, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Gavin with support, Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. We now move on to citizens' comments, much like I said a few minutes ago. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay. Seeing nobody rushing up to the microphone, we will move on to our order of business this evening, first with our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1344. Resolution number R 3319, matter of recognizing Eileen Stedman for her services as council member for the City of Berkeley. Motion number M 8819, matter of approving the 2019-2020 Winter Maintenance Agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley. The city will be reimbursed a total of $10,897.60, which will be paid in two installments, 50%, $5,448.80 due in December 2019, and 50%, $5,448.80 due in March 2020. Motion number M 8919, matter of appointing the Community Engagement Officer Tori Mathes as the City of Berkeley's representative to the community media network Public Access TV, CMNTV Board of Trustees for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and to instruct the city clerk to send a copy of this motion to the CMNTV Board. Ordinance number O 919, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Article 12 Residential Grading and Drainage Standards to Chapter 26 Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to establish standards for residential grading and drainage and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at Berkeley City Hall, Library and Community Center. And that is it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Any corrections or additions with all of that? Okay. Seeing none, did a wonderful job, Ms. Mitchell. Would you please call the roll?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Miller, would you please, Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
We do have a recognition presentation on there. Councilmember Stedman, would you please come up to the podium? And I will be reading this one on my own. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring Eileen Stedman's service to the City of Berkeley. Whereas Eileen was born in Dexter, Michigan, and raised in Royal Oak, where she graduated from Don Darrow High School, and Eileen received her bachelor's degree in special education from Western Michigan University, and her master's degree in learning and behavior disorders from Oakland University. Whereas Eileen and her family moved to the City of Berkeley in 1976, and whereas Eileen would go on to raise four daughters, Shannon, Jan, Kim, and Sally, in Berkeley, with each of them graduating from Berkeley High School. And whereas Eileen dedicated her life to the teaching and enrichment of special needs children. From 1966 to 2006, she taught special education classes in the Royal Oak School District, first at the high school level, then middle school level, then preschool. And whereas Eileen continued her passion through the administration of Parent-Todler Program for children with mild to moderate delays. Under Eileen's direction, the Parent-Todler Program was named Best Program in the State by the Michigan Speech and Hearing Association. And whereas Eileen's long civic career began in 1995, when she was appointed to the Planning Commission, and then went on to be elected to the City Council in 1997, where she since has been serving. Eileen went on to do so much more than merely sit on the City Council. In her long tenure on the City Council, she served as liaison to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Library Board, the Beautification Committee, and the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee. Eileen also answered the call to serve whenever asked through various ad hoc committees. Whereas even with all that she has accomplished, Eileen is still most proud of her time with the Berkeley's Parent Teacher Association. She began her PTA career at Hamilton, now Rogers, Elementary, where she became PTA President, and went on to serve on the Berkeley Area PTA Council, where she was also elected President. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves that the Council of the City of Berkeley, on behalf of all residents, recognizes the many contributions of Eileen Stedman and her service to the City of Berkeley. As Eileen retires from the Berkeley City Council, she does so as the longest-serving member in the history of the City of Berkeley. Eileen will always be remembered as a supporter of her favorite things about Berkeley, its small-town atmosphere, walkability, great services, and the caring disposition of residents. Eileen's experience and insightfulness will be missed on the Berkeley City Council, but she will no doubt continue to serve on various boards and commissions, as she has always done for more than four decades. That is happening. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, November 18, 2019, Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor. I'm going to bring this down to you. Ready? And before I give you access to the microphone, there are a number of folks who want to speak of your time and recognize all that you've done for the city. But personally, I want to take a minute to tell you how impactful you have been on my tenure here as mayor now, but also before that as council member. Your wisdom, your experience, your guidance, especially early on, was incredibly impactful. I'll just say that. You don't understand the type of role model that you were in showing me what it took to be a council member at that early age, especially with some of the other riffraff that I had to deal with on council. Some of them are behind you right now. Mayor Stefan, Mayor O'Dwyer, I saw Mayor Pro Tem Good Courage in here. I mean, I had to turn to you. Not a lot of other places I could go to end up here. So I want to thank you, Eileen, for everything that you've done. And that was true. You are not going away. You may be retiring from council, but you will continue to serve and volunteer in the community and continue to have an impact on our city, just as you've done for all these decades. So thank you, Eileen. Okay. Who would like to go next? I know where, let's get, Mallory, Robert? We have our state senator and state representative here.
Sit back down.
No, you don't have to sit back down. No, you guys stay up there.
It's like a roast.
Well, Mayor Turbrack already started the roast.
Not on her, though.
Yeah, that's true. I won't do that either. And I'm not going to read this, and I think Mayor Turbrack did a great job. Obviously, that resolution is spot on. But just a thank you. This is one of the most thankless jobs in the world. You guys don't get, you don't get paid that much here, enough to go spend it over at Omaras, probably, is about all you get. So we know you did not do this for the accolades, for the money. You did this because you love Berkeley. And it started at such a, at an early time, when you got involved with your children, with the four daughters and with the PTA. And, you know, Berkeley's been listed on countless websites and different, where they're ranking Berkeley as one of the safest cities, one of the best cities to live, in all these different rankings. And you have been such an integral part of that, in leading this community in the right direction. And so it's just an honor for me to be here. You know, our families know each other. My brother went to school with your daughters. I'm a little bit younger. I was a, I think, a sophomore or a junior at Berkeley High School when you first started on the council, not to age you at all. But it's been, you know, amazing to have you to look up to as, you know, I'm starting out in leadership here and serving as the state representative in Berkeley and the surrounding areas, and going to school in the Berkeley School District, and your name is so highly respected. So it's an honor for me and for our state senator, Mallory McMorro, to be able to have this and present this to you in special tribute, just to thank you for your dedication to the community and the school district and everything you've done. So, do you want to add anything?
Yeah. And I would just add, as a very new member of the legislature and somebody whose older brother-in-law has Down Syndrome, and I have such tremendous respect for you. And as I look around, the communities that we all serve, I mean, I don't think there are very many better examples. As I start my career, I can only hope to emulate everything you've given to Berkeley. And I know I'm a Royal Oak resident, so I just live down the street. Don't hold that against me. But particularly for somebody who served the Royal Oak School District for as long as you did, just thank you for everything.
I'm going to put you in the whole business, and we got to do a picture.
Mayor O'Dwyer? Hold all her loot, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I go back, actually, those 22 years to the very beginning of Eileen's time on council. And I just, in congratulating her for all she's done and in thanking her for all she's accomplished, I just would like to draw our attention to leaner times than we experience today. There was a time in this city, and Eileen, you were only on the council maybe three or four years, when budgets were extremely tight. They were so tight that many services that we enjoy today had to be cut. And Eileen was part of a council at that time that had to make those tough decisions. It's easy to make the decisions when there's money around, but when there isn't money and things have to be cut back, it's a most unpopular kind of situation. So we thank you for being there in the tough days for our city, and we're happy to celebrate with you today, an immense achievement as the longest-serving member of our city council. Congratulations and thank you.
Eileen, we went to many meetings together, and I'm not talking about just these. You were a good, reliable representative of the city. You went to all the meetings of the, I've forgotten the name of the organization. I was going to say Woodward Avenue Action Association, but that's not it. The MML. Yeah. The Michigan Municipal League. Twice a year. And you sat through many difficult issues there. We sat through many difficult issues here. Phil mentioned 2001, when we had to make all kinds of cuts. But there were also the cuts in 2008 and 2009. And thank goodness we had you there. And thank you for all your years of dedication to the children of both communities and to the people of this city. And enjoy retirement.
I didn't let you leave early, but I wrote mine out, and I'm not quite that tall. The last words in the council resolution says how proud Eileen is of her time with Berkeley PTA. PTA has been a vital part of the Berkeley School District for many years. Through Eileen's guidance and advocating skills, she was able to make a difference in the lives of our children and their families with our local PTAs and our PTA Council. Lasting friendships were made and quality projects were completed, and yes, lots of fun along the way. As the largest child advocacy association, National PTA, has been our leader for 22, 122 years. Advocating for children and their families is what PTA does, and we do it very well, and we do it daily in Berkeley and around the state, around the nation. So it's easy to see why Eileen is so proud of her time, excuse me, with Berkeley PTA. They have remained committed to doing what's best for children for many years, and this commitment is shown throughout our school district. Last year, our Berkeley PTA Council celebrated their 70th anniversary. This year, Angel and Burton both celebrated their 75th anniversary. Next year, Pat and Gil will celebrate 75 years. Berkeley High School will celebrate 70 years. Anderson, Norup, and Rogers are all in their 60-plus years. So that's a lot of commitment and dedication from volunteers, and yes, we're all volunteers. Excuse me. Last year, Michigan PTA celebrated our 100th anniversary. To commemorate this, excuse me, milestone, I don't know why I am nervous up here. I'd rather talk in front of 500 people I don't know, but anyway. To commemorate this milestone, we had Poabic Tile. If you're familiar with that, it's a well-known, very unique place. Anyway, we had Poabic Tile create a limited number of centennial tiles for us. The tile represents the history of Michigan PTA and how one person can make a difference. We have presented these tiles throughout Michigan to honor people who have been exemplary child advocates. Tonight, on behalf of Michigan PTA, I am very pleased to present a commemorative Poabic Tile to our very own exemplary child advocate, Eileen Stedman. Thank you, Eileen, for all you've done. They are gorgeous.
Thank you, Barb.
And we've also included a centennial coffee mug. You can set home and drink whatever you want in it. At the next council meeting. Thank you so much. Oh, you're welcome.
Anybody else that would like to, before I give Eileen the microphone? Mayor Pro Tem, Good Courage? If I knew you were coming up, I would have withheld my earlier comments.
Mr. Mayor and council, and honorable councilwoman, thank you so much for letting me come up tonight. Although my stay here was brief, I can tell you that I learned so much. We came in at a very difficult time in the city, and I wasn't sure where to go and the direction that I would go. But I was fortunate enough to sit where Mayor Pro Tem is sitting, and next to me was this fine lady who helped me through a lot, the closed-door policies, getting in on afterwards, going to Lansing. Sharing in some very difficult times and some cherished times, and those difficult times as a resident, it makes you feel poor of heart that things falter. But when you have somebody so strong and willing to get you through that, it makes it so simple. So in my brief amount of time, thank you so much for your kindness. Thank you for getting me through. And I can tell you honestly, it's a lot better being on this side.
All right, Eileen.
Well, I get to talk.
So yours.
And I might mention, Gil, Good Courage always brought me lifesavers or cough drops. Well, first of all, I've got something written out, but I wanted to say at first that I never really intended to run for City Council. I was very involved with PTA. And then, one year, 1995, Jerry Durst asked me to be on the Planning Commission. And I said, oh, sure, okay, you know. And it says in the bylaws that it should be a cross-section of people in the community of occupations and interests and so on. So he thought I would be perfect. I had no idea what I was doing when I got in there and looked around at architects and so on, and plans and all of this stuff. But I did learn a lot in that two years. And then when the current mayor would not reappoint me, I decided to run for City Council, and that's when I ran, in 1997. But it was interesting how I got involved with the city and how important it has been to me all these years. And I've prepared something. This is definitely a bittersweet goodbye, because I'm really going to miss it. I've met and worked with so many extraordinary people that I couldn't even begin to name them all. I had the privilege of working with three terrific city managers, Bill Recklin, Jane Beistessah, and now Matt Baumgarten. I was honored to be able to hire two of them, Jane and Matt. The employees that I've known throughout the past several years are and have been wonderful and dedicated. We have had some incredible employees. Our city service, our police department is very caring and responsive to all of the residents. Our city services are second to none. The residents, all of the people who live here, are active and involved, both on city committees and in the school district and in their neighborhood, in many ways throughout this city. I am proud to have been a part of many of the honors and accolades that we have received from various groups and publications since 2009. It seems like in 2009, all of a sudden, someone up there saw us and put us on the radar, and we kept getting more and more awards and accolades. And that one was Bloomberg's Business Review naming us the best and most affordable community to live in, in Michigan. And at that time, when Jane's assistant said Bloomberg's Business Review is on the phone, Jane replied to her, "We don't need any more magazines." More recently, we were named the best city to live in in Michigan. And at the same time, Michigan was named the best state in the country to live in. So where does that put Berkeley? It puts us right on top. This is not only attributed to city government, but to schools, our many volunteers, and all of our residents. In 1997, when I first was elected, we had a pathetic fund balance of $55,000, which would not have run the city for even an hour. We made hard decisions and cutbacks, as has been referred to already, through the 2000s, and now have a healthy fund balance of over $4 million. Fiscal responsibility must, has to be always a priority. You can never, like, splurge, like maybe sometimes we would love to, because we never know when another 2008 is going to come around. I was hoping to be on City Council long enough to be a part of building a new community center. Now, I'm simply hoping that I will live long enough to see this happen. I want to thank to everyone who has supported me in the past, and I want to thank those who wanted to support me this election term time. I wish the new City Council the best of successes and accomplishments, as I know that you are all only here because of your dedication to this city and all of its residents. And thank you very much for your future service.
It's clear you've had an impact on far more folks than you probably understand. And, you know, your commitment to help, whether it's in the city or whether it's in the schools, is certainly commendable and a role model for anybody who wants to have an impact on folks. So thank you again. You will be missed, but you will not be getting too far. I promise you that. Ms. Mitchell, let's move on. Would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 1919, matter of appointing Mayor Pro Tem from November 2019 until November 2021.
You know what? I'm going to pause on that for just one second. Senator McMorro, do you want to give a legislative update before? Because I don't think there's going to be a better time to actually get that in. If we don't do it now, we might miss it.
We'll be here all night. Hi, everybody. Mr. Mayor, members of council, everybody else. First of all, I just want to say, I always want to come when it's swearing-in day and celebration day. This is one of the most joyous meetings I've ever been to, and I think we're ever going to have.
Normally, it's just swearing day, not swearing.
Swearing day starts after this. So just wanted to come and provide a brief legislative update. I know there's a lot on the agenda. We in the legislature are currently on hunting break this week and next week. I am not a very good hunter. I played paintball growing up, and I'm pretty good at Buck Hunter, so if we know where there's one in a bar, we can join me there and we can talk about legislative issues. A couple of things that have come up. A resident mentioned earlier, there was news this morning, we had a press conference at Beaumont in Royal Oak announcing a new bill that's being proposed to amend the Municipal Partnership Act. This is actually introduced by Representative Shepherd, which would amend it to allow multiple municipalities to work together towards a potential new transit plan, but not only transit, towards anything that is a regional economic development issue. One of the things that this would allow is, and that I think is really important, would be to ensure that any funds that would be levied to support something like transit would be guaranteed to go to that issue. That is something that I've heard countless times from residents, is that I want to know where the funds are going when we dedicate it to something. So, you know, we've learned quite a bit from a number of the transit proposals that have been put forward. And right now, the communities that are thinking about taking part in planning, again, I just want to emphasize, there's no plan just yet. This is the start of that phase, would be Oakland, Wayne County, and Washtenaw. Macomb County has decided at this time not to take part in the early phases, but what this legislation would allow them to do- but what this legislation would allow them to do, which is different than the current RTA, would be allowing another county to opt in at a later time if they so choose. So, I think one of the challenges of the RTA is it's kind of been an all-or-nothing solution. We've seen kind of Northern Oakland County has not wanted to participate. Macomb has not wanted to participate, and Oakland County as a whole, every now and then, has not wanted to participate. So, this is much more flexible. So, we're hoping that there's bipartisan support for this bill in the House and the Senate that would allow for this kind of partnership to occur and to be much more transparent and collaborative with residents on building out a new transit plan. And I think as we look at economic development for the region, I know we want to have something that works and works for everybody, and that is of value to the residents. Not that residents feel like they are being taxed for something that they won't use. Another big update, the lead and copper rule is something that has been implemented, and new testing is rolling out this year. As you may have seen, there have been multiple municipalities within Oakland County and multiple of the cities that I represent that have tested positive for elevated lead levels in water. One of the things that I just want to make clear on this rule, the lead and copper rule that we have in the state of Michigan is the most aggressive in the entire country. We all know what happened in the wake of the Flint Water Crisis, and we are now significantly more proactive than any other state in the country. So, our new water is, our new water testing system is designed to really hone in on the source of contamination. So, what I want to make clear with all of the municipalities that I represent, but the entire state frankly, is that had we known then what we know now, we would have built our underground infrastructure very differently. But we know that there's no level of lead that is safe for human consumption. So, as this testing continues to roll out, I am continuing to be very, very vocal in Lansing to make sure we have enough funding, we have enough resources to adequately replace all of the lead service lines. But if you need me to bring resources out, if there are any questions, any concerns, we've had a lot of people, just with questions about what this means, feel free to contact my office, and we are facilitating meetings with the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy and municipalities to answer any questions. Couple of other things. Speaking about kind of incentives and budget, I had an op-ed that ran in Cranes last week about trying to push the state to be much more collaborative on our incentive programs. People who may have read the New York Times over the weekend might have seen that FedEx is now paying zero taxes, net zero, and that's something we've seen in the state of Michigan as well, that there continues to be this trend where major corporations are not paying their fair share, and we as residents feel much of that burden. So, as we start to look in the state of some of these incentive programs that are coming down, I would like us to take a much more holistic look, and a great example is looking at Amazon in Michigan versus Amazon in Virginia and the package that they put together. We as a state were ready to give Amazon $4.4 billion in incentives. We lost that bid. Virginia, by comparison, had an $800 million incentive, but packaged with a new campus of Virginia Tech and increased investment in mass transit and infrastructure, and they won that business and increased an investment in themselves. So, I'm pushing on that. But if there are local investments that Berkeley would like to see the state make, please let me know. Because I'm trying to make sure that we have more revenue from the state back to the municipalities so that we do not continue to lean on millages and going to the ballot and continuing to ask residents for funding locally to make up for the fact that revenue sharing from the state back to our municipalities is at an all-time low and continues to be so. With that, the last thing, I am working on a bill package to expand Michigan's electric vehicle charging infrastructure. It's a bipartisan package. We have two Republicans and two Democrats. We've gotten great reception on it. It would be largely revenue-neutral, but would help us put a plan together to support a rollout in the state and position us to be the first fully-networked state in the entire country. So, I'm hoping for a hearing by the end of the year. And we have a unanimous resolution from Oakland County, Republicans and Democrats supporting that legislation, which is really exciting. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for our State Senator while she's here? Okay, I think we're all focused on some other things.
I know, there are a lot of things going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator McMorro, for being here this evening, not only to present the Resolution to Councilmember Stedman, but also for being here to update us. Yeah, I hear you got a rousing applause from the hallway? Excellent, excellent. All right. Motion M 1919 has already been read. It is matter of appointing a Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a motion to approve M 1919?
Your Honor, I'd be happy to make a motion on that.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem. Support? Okay, support. Okay, per our charter, the council elects a Mayor Pro Tem. We need to choose one for the 38th Council. The charter does not outline requirements, specific requirements, for the position other than needing four votes. Mayor Pro Tem Baker has served the position admirably for the past four years. So, I think we'll start with any thoughts you have potentially moving forward, if you want to.
Well, thank you. In the spirit of reminiscing, I'd like to thank the previous two councils for entrusting me with this role. It has been a great honor to have served in that capacity. In addition to serving the residents, to be able to help provide that additional support to us here on council. As we know, the role of Mayor Pro Tem doesn't mean that you're next in line to be the mayor. It means that you get to fill in if our mayor's out of town or otherwise unable to participate. I've had the great pleasure of serving two terrific mayors in this role and learned so much and found it to be very rewarding and abilities to find new ways to serve the city and all of the volunteers. And so, my current term, I still have two years left. Hopefully, that's good news, or at least for most of you out there. And here's how I'd like to spend those two years. I'd like to spend those next two years helping support the next Mayor Pro Tem in learning that role and doing those additional things behind the scenes. I was looking back and I was reminded that over the last decade, we've had exactly two Mayor Pro Tems', or Pro Tem-mi, or whatever the plural is, for that. And so, I think it's a great opportunity. And so, I would like to put Ms. Bridget Dean's name and nomination for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, so, we have a nominee for Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second to that? I don't know if there even needs to be one, but in case there is. Okay. As I mentioned, it takes four votes to make that official. So, we have Bridget Dean nominated for Mayor Pro Tem. We have a second. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the role on Bridget as Mayor Pro Tem?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
So, Councilmember Dean will become Mayor Pro Tem Dean as we get things squared away. And I want to thank former Mayor Pro Tem Baker for his years of service, especially the past two years since I have been sitting in this chair. It's been vital to have somebody with your, not only passion, energy, and excitement, and really happiness, even when I am not really happy about being in this chair, to be able to bounce ideas off of. So, I certainly appreciate that. And as the other part of that 10 years, you mentioned it actually would be nice to have somebody much, you know, probably better than us.
He can get some good hands.
In the future. So, I appreciate that. We will now move on to item number three. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2020 application in the approximate amount of $36,290 to fund eligible projects.
Okay, I will open our CDBG public hearing at, in just one moment. We'll give a public hearing, be a nice opportunity for everyone to head across the street who wants to head across the street. My permission slip isn't signed tonight. Thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing at 8:06.
Good evening. My name is Kai Campbell Fox. I am a resident of Berkeley, but I'm actually here representing Haven in Pontiac. I have information to share with you all. There are three things for each of you. A pamphlet, information about our Prevention Education Department, and overall facts and figures about Haven.
Thank you.
Yes, I was holding from the left side. They're a little left-heavy because of the half-sheets of paper. So, as you may already know, Haven is an agency that works with intimate partner violence and sexual assault, both the treatment and prevention of it, in Oakland County. Your support last year enabled us to support 31 survivors in the city of Berkeley, including four from counseling, six with personal protection orders, eight with court advocacy, one for residential, and 12 on our crisis line. A lot of people know about us because of our emergency shelter, but we offer comprehensive services, including all of those I just mentioned, as well as our prevention education. So, we come to a lot of communities around Oakland County to ask for community development block grants. Berkeley's funded us in the past, so thank you very much for that support. That enables us to do our work for more people. We know that anyone can become victimized by intimate partner violence and sexual assault, regardless of personal identities. So, being able to provide support for as many people as possible is our goal. If you have any questions about Haven or the work that we do, I would be happy to answer those questions. So, the information you have is for you to share, take to whoever else you might need to.
Councilmember Baker.
It'll take a little time. Not a question, just want to thank you for being here. As you've noticed over the past, Berkeley has supported Haven, and I certainly will support us doing that again tonight. It's with heavy heart that we do that, though, right? I mean, we wish that you guys didn't need to be there, and you could apply that talent in other ways. But I'm glad that the mission that you've chosen to take on, and I'm glad that we're at least able to do a little bit to help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, I was able to attend an educational program offered by Haven through Berkeley's Rotary Club. And we learned about all the different programs that Haven does, but we were also trained in recognition and prevention. And I appreciate that you offer those services as well to your communities and to clubs and organizations that can get the message out to help you wrap around everyone who might not even know that they're at risk. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm so glad you're able to attend that. I'm actually a prevention education specialist, so that's the work I do at Haven. And, you know, we are happy to be there to support survivors, but it's even better if survivors never have to come to us in the first place, right? So, if you have the opportunity to talk about our programs to other people, we do K-12 education, as well as community and collegiate and professional training. So, feel free to share our information with other people. We're always hoping to expand and work with more communities. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight. And somebody from your organization has been pretty consistent, and that allows us to have the conversation, but also to make sure that we're continuing to support that. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Anybody else for the CDBG public hearing? Going once, twice. Okay, seeing nobody else coming to the microphone, I will close the public hearing at 8:10 PM. And now, we will move on, Ms. Mitchell, to item number four on tonight's agenda.
Resolution R 3419, matter of adopting the Community Development Block Grant Program application for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve R 3419?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Dean, supported by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten, we're 10 minutes in. Somebody serve some cake with the cake.
All right, cake was intended to keep everybody awake. Ms. Mayor, CDBG is an acronym for Community Development Block Grants. It's a federally-funded program that's administered for us through Oakland County. Locally here, our Community Development Director works on it with our Finance Department to make sure that we properly expend those dollars year after year in the way that is both federally mandated and mandated at the county level. So, we bring before you the slate of monies that we'd like to use divvied up into very specific areas. Our Community Development Director has the additional information on that.
Good evening. Yep, so, as City Manager Baumgarten noted, the CDBG application for Program Year 2020, it's for the Community Development Block Grant, the federally, federal grant program that utilizes funds received from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. HUD, as it's known, will give those funds to Oakland County, and Oakland County disperses those to local jurisdictions based on a formula allocation. I was able to attend the CDBG workshop through Oakland County last month, where we received the application materials and were given an approximate as to how much funds we would be receiving for the Program 2020 year. That allocation is $36,290. We are eligible to use up to four projects with those monies. So, in your packet, there is a resolution that spells out the four projects that we are looking to fund. It's largely similar to the application that was submitted for the Project 2019 year, but I will go through those for you. Number one is the removal of architectural barriers. This will be retrofitting existing sidewalks, ramps to ADA standards throughout the community. Number two, public services, also known as yard services. This will include lawn mowing, snow shoveling, cleanup services for disabled seniors. Public services, disabled services. This is the large print books, accessible reading materials that will be available through the Berkeley Public Library. And public services, battered and abused spouses. This is monies that go to Haven, which will provide shelter, counseling, advocacy for victims of domestic and sexual abuse. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for our Community Development Director this evening, relates to the CDBG funds. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. As part of that seminar by the county, was there any talk about future funding from HUD about CDBG? I know that's always potentially been on the chopping block, and so I don't know if that's still the case, or if...
It is. It's still very much, they're not sure how much longer these programs will be eligible for these programs or these programs will be in existence, so trying to kind of grab what we have while we can.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a quick question. This is basically the same breakdown we had for the 1920 year.
Correct.
Same percentage-type things.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Public services, you're limited to 30% of your allocated total. So, for the yard service, disabled services, battered and abused spouses, that totals 30%, and the rest of it goes to the sidewalk program.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions or comments. Thank you, Aaron, for being with us today and being able to enlighten us on what exactly was going to be happening in our CDBG program this year. And seeing no additional comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the role on R 3419?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
3419 has passed. We now move on to item number five on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance Number O 1619, matter of considering first reading of an ordinance to add new Article 14 prohibition of conversion therapy to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O 1619? So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A couple of the local communities, some of our surrounding neighbors, have actually enacted ordinances similar to this. We received, City Council received, a passionate email from one of our residents as well asking us to take this same topic under consideration. And so, hearing from a couple of council members that were interested, myself and the city attorney, in doing so, we bring to you the ordinance here this evening. Myself and city attorney can answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody here that would like to comment before I turn it over? State Senator?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this here locally. I am the primary sponsor of the bill in the Senate to ban conversion therapy. And this is something that came up after hearing a number of heartbreaking stories from residents. For those who aren't familiar, this is purported therapy that claims to be able to change somebody, particularly in the legislation that we have put forward, minors from being LGBTQ to somebody who is straight. And we already see elevated levels of anxiety, depression, and suicide among the LGBTQ community. But when people are put through quote-unquote "therapy" in this therapy... community, but when people are put through quote-unquote "therapy," and this therapy has been widely decried by every mental and physical health association in the country as not only ineffective, this is something scientifically you cannot do, but incredibly damaging, that there are three times the rate of suicide, particularly among young people who are subjected to this type of therapy. So, it's been a challenge in the state legislature to move this. It's been something that has been introduced for a number of sessions, but we have seen some local municipalities throughout the state take this up, including Huntington Woods and East Lansing, who have adopted that. So, I'm grateful that it is being taken up. It's something that's really, really hard when we do get calls, particularly from younger residents, who have attempted suicide, who have tried to attempt suicide, and are just reaching out begging us to do something. And for parents who may not know what to do, we have found that some parents are seeking out accredited therapy so that their child can work through, you know, complicated feelings that we all had when we were growing up, and might find themselves in something that they thought was real therapy and is actually significantly damaging. So, this is something that is consumer protection, it's child protection, and it just makes good sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator McMorris.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. The people who provide these services are licensed, regulated, overseen by the state. Like any number of professions, I mean, barbers are licensed and regulated by the state. That's where this needs to be taken up, not at local municipalities, definitely not at If what we're envisioning here is to take someone's livelihood, take a piece of it out, and say, "You're no longer allowed to do this," it would be like telling a barber, "Well, yeah, the state's licensed you, but in Berkeley, you can't do straight razor shaves." Same kind of a concept. You're taking action where none is needed in Berkeley. It's not for the local municipalities to do, it's for the state to do. Local municipalities, even those that have already passed these things, have no standing to do this because of the licensing and regulation done at the state. There's nothing for the local municipalities to address here. I don't know enough about the therapy. Our state senator seems to have a handle on that. I'm not talking about the therapy itself. What I'm saying is, there is no standing for a local municipality to do this because it's done by the licensing and regulation at the state level, not at the local level. So, I urge you tonight to vote this down, and put it back to the state, and let the state deal with it where it needs to be.
Thank you, Chuck.
Hi, Wendy Zabramski, Berkeley. I heard Mr. Baumgarten say he received an email from a resident. Again, I think this should be a state level. Two municipalities have done this, East Lansing and Huntington Woods, and all this work and effort has gone into this. It reminds me of the chicken ordinance for very few people. All this work goes into it when it clearly is being dealt with at the state level.
Thank you, Wendy. Comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say, in answer to Mr. Terrell, professional ethics of every counseling/medical group prevents this type of conversion therapy. So, you're basically not talking in this ordinance about licensed professionals regulated by the state, you're talking about somebody else. Who that is, maybe religious organizations, something else, but state-licensed people aren't permitted by their professional ethics from doing this.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
So, I love this community, and I wanted to serve it because I believe that Berkeley is a safe and inclusive community. I know that we are. I believe, although I can't take any credit for getting this ordinance on the agenda, it happened before my time, as you all saw, I want to make a case for it because I believe that it shows the rest of our surrounding communities, our region, that we are safe and inclusive. It goes beyond how it can affect those potential individuals who are suffering from this behavior. You know, I was a high school English teacher, I was the advisor for the Gay Straight Alliance at my high school, and I saw the research that high schools who have, who bring gay straight alliances into their school, it reduces the depression and risk of suicide for all students, not just the students who participate in the gay straight alliance. And I see this as a message to our community and from our community out to our region. We are a safe and inclusive space, and that message benefits every resident in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Haven?
Yeah, so, I'm going to support this. It, you know, does protect minors, which is paramount, but it also offers the First Amendment protections for religious expression by, for teaching by parents, guardians, or the clergy. And since it has those protections in it, I am comfortable with this legislation.
Thank you. As Councilmember Price mentioned, this is, you know, assigned to the city, to the residents, but to the region, with State Senator has just mentioned that the bill's been introduced a few times, a few sessions, hasn't gotten through. It's also assigned to the state, that if more municipalities do begin to make, pass ordinances like we are right now, the state is going to have to, hopefully, take notice of that and make some instructions and some changes at the state level as well, which is why I will be supporting this as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O. 1619?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. O. 1619 has passed the first reading. We now move on to item number six. Please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M. 9119, matter of approving special land use approval, SU. 01-19, to Kinder Care Child Care Facility and Office District, who is proposing to occupy a portion of the first floor of the existing office building at 1695 12 Mile Road at the southwest corner of 12 Mile and Brookline.
Is there a motion to approve M. 9119?
Motion to approve.
Support.
By Councilmember Haven, with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes to the City Council by way of the Planning Commission, who held their public hearings in due diligence. Included in your packet is a memo from Community Development Director Erin Schluto, as well as the application materials and additional information on how exactly this use would be incorporated into the existing built environments at that location. Ms. Schluto is available for any questions the city council may have.
Community Development Director, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just want to say that we had, the Planning Commission held their public hearing. There was one resident who had some concerns about the use in a medical building. The bottom main floor will be repurposed and redeveloped for the Kinder Care. A portion of it will be retained separate for an office use that would be used for the 814 LLC. They're moving their headquarter offices from Troy to Berkeley. The entire second floor will be maintained as office use, but it is outpatient type of facility, so there won't be any overnight stays or any medical use of that nature.
And the Planning Commission unanimously approved this?
Recommended approval.
Recommended this, okay. Questions for Community Development Director? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't see the DPW director's memo in the package we got, so I went and talked to him today. Also, I went and talked to the fire marshal today. The concerns that I have are the relocation of the fire hydrant. The fire hydrant that we've got back there is a non-standard hydrant, and I don't have a problem with it moving, but we have to make sure that that is corrected to become a standard hydrant. If we have the opportunity with the construction people that are doing this, I, and I think the whole Public Safety Department would like to see that hydrant moved completely out of that area, instead of just across the road, move it out where we can approach it, because the way this is going to be set up now, that hydrant is going to be in the collapse zone, or very close to the collapse zone, so if we pull the truck in there, we're going to be in danger. So, that's something, and there's continued negotiations with the organization. I'd like to see that moved. We need to clarify the easements. There's some problems with easements in there, and some catch basins and covers and things that need to be worked out yet that I didn't see in the plans. I also talked to the fire marshal, and he agrees on the replacement of the hydrant. The other thing is, if there is a fire in that building, the kids enter into the fenced-in play area, and they have to exit through either end. So, the kids that have come out in the middle have to go all the way down one way or the other to get out of the fenced-in area. So, I think some consideration should be given to installing a special gate in the center section, exiting into the roadway, so they can move out of that area either to Brookline or north, or north, east, excuse me, west of Brookline or east of the parking lot. So, I think there's some things that need to be looked at yet. I think it's a good use of the building. I think they got a good plan. It just needs to be fine-tuned a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, a lot of those things that you referenced were discussed during the site plan review. That was also done concurrently with Planning Commission. They did recommend approval with condition, so there are still some site-specific improvements that need to be addressed, and the hydrant was one of them. But we will discuss with the applicant about the gates.
Thank you.
Behind you, Erin, there's a resident.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. I attended that Planning Commission meeting, and had the documents, and I was trying to wrap my head around exactly where this building is. It was listed on the Planning Commission documents as being on the north side of 12 Mile, so I had it being the other side of Coolidge. If it was on the north side of 12 Mile really there, it would be in the cemetery, and it's not. By the time I realized that, I tried to bring it to the chair's attention. We were told, "Time for public comment has passed." I then approached a member of staff, pointed it out to the staff person, thinking that they might be able to get the notation corrected. That person did nothing with it. So, everything was approved on a misidentified parcel of property. The public hearing, the site plan approval, the special land use was done for a building on the north side of 12 Mile, not on the south side, which is in, the packet tonight, it is correctly identified as being on the south side of 12 Mile. So, my question is, and what people have told me who know about such things, is that this needs to be kicked back to the Planning Commission, who needs to rehear it with corrected documents.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
The first I heard of it, and I know a little about these things, too. The address was listed correctly, as was all other identifying information, except apparently for the side of the street. I would view that as a very minor defect, and not something that necessitates going back, or that nullifies any of the proceedings that have taken place so far.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments, either for Community Development Director or Councilmember Haven?
Yeah, just, I'm very excited to see this. I think, as mentioned in the application, there is a, you know, real need for additional childcare services in our community and the surrounding community. I've constantly seen people looking for that need, and I think this will fill that, or help fill that, and support this.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would also like to express how happy and excited I am that we will be bringing more business to Berkeley, and the company will be relocating their offices from Troy to Berkeley. It's always a good thing to infuse more business into the city, so thank you for that.
Any additional questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you call the roll on M. 9119, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. M. 9119 has been approved. We now move on to number seven on tonight's agenda, please.
Motion number M. 9219, matter of approving the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program, purchase of two 2020 Ford F-250 pickup trucks, and a 2020 Ford F-550 truck chassis, at a total cost of $108,262 from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan. This expenditure will be charged to account numbers 101-441-985-000, and 592-536-985-000.
Is there a motion to approve M. 9219?
Motion approved.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard, with support, Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. These, as outlined in the memo in your packet, as well as the specs, these are yet another piece of equipment that we need to continue to render the best services in the state of Michigan. That includes responding to an eight-inch snowstorm in the middle of November randomly. Included in your documentation is a memo from DPW Director Derek Schuler, as well as a transmitter from me, from the Finance Department as well, affirming that funds exist, and this was a budget item for this budget year, so. Mr. Schuler, of course, is available for any of chassis questions and specs on gear ratios.
Derek, why don't you tell us a little more?
Thank you, Matt, thank you. So, these are three replacement vehicles that will be replacing vehicles in our fleet that are between 10 and 20 years old, so these new pickups will be put into the fleet immediately. We're using the Macomb County Bid Purchase Program, which is the same program we've used for a number of years, which allows us to buy these Ford vehicles at a significant discount over what a normal resident would pay. So, this is the same program that Public Safety uses to buy police vehicles, and we have been purchasing Ford trucks off it for a number of years now, and have had great success with it. So, we're looking forward to the new vehicles. In your packet, there's details about what's on these vehicles. We put some options on it. Sean Young, our foreman, went through that. Councilman Blanchard has offered his wonderful input as well on some of the fine details, and we've got some great vehicles planned here, and I'm hoping that we'll get them very soon.
Almost sounded sarcastic for a minute there.
No sarcasm.
For a second, and then, okay. Questions for Mr. Schuler? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks, as always, for helping ensure that the city has the infrastructure that it needs, so that we can in turn provide the infrastructure that all of our residents and businesses depend on. From a timing perspective, you said you mentioned, hopefully, pretty soon. Can you give us a bit more of a window as to the lead time to order these, and if there's any final work they need to do, and training, you know, that kind of stuff?
So, our understanding is about a month time period. That's traditionally how long Signature has taken on these vehicles, so we're expecting them in about a month's time. The one chassis that's on the bid, that is for a hook truck body that council previously approved, sort of a, what I'd call a smaller hook truck. Again, that will give us some flexibility out in the field, so we're definitely looking forward to that vehicle coming in. But the other ones are, the other two are two pickup trucks that will be put to general use as soon as they come in, so about a month's time.
Nice. And the existing equipment, will that be resold, or auctioned, or?
The existing equipment will be going to public auction.
Nice. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say that the DPW does a very thorough job on the specs. Sean knows what he's talking about. I spent a lot of time going over them, and I think it's a very good spec. I had one question this morning, and after researching it, we talked to Sean. I had a question about the CA, but it seemed short to me, but we went through all the things, and we cited that an 84-inch CA is the correct, the correct one, so he specked it right.
I was a little worried about that.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up.
I'm very nervous.
That's cab daxel rate measurement. But the important thing I want to talk about was the fact that going through this bid saved us $37,736 over regular-priced vehicles at a dealership. So, it's a significant saving for...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Schuler? As has already been mentioned, Derek, the crew has gotten a little bit of an early start. crew has gotten a little bit of an early start on snow removal and salting, and have, as per usual, done a magnificent job. I got to tell you, it's a lot easier for you to come up here and ask us money when you have this reputation that you have in the city. If you didn't, a little bit different. Councilmember Blanchard wouldn't be as polite in going through your specs and allowing the 84 or 86, whatever CA he's letting slide. But they do tremendous job, and I know that your crew probably does not get enough of the kudos because most time they're out working and people don't necessarily see them. They're working in the morning, or they're working in the middle of the night to try to keep the roads clear and safe for all of our residents. So please, you, Sean, the whole crew, please express not only our appreciation, but just laud them for the tremendous job that they have done and continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M. 9219?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
M. 9219 has passed. We now move on to item number eight on our agenda.
Resolution Number R. 3519, matter of establishing a master plan steering committee.
Is there a motion to approve R. 3519?
Motion to approve.
Whoa, the chorus. Take your pick.
Mayor Pro Tem gets that, supported by Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgartner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have put together a slate that we feel will be adequately steer the master plan process to right where it needs to be. We do anticipate this to be a long process. As you'll note from the memo from Michluto, we're talking about 18 to 24 months for the service on this committee. But again, it's a good cross-representation of the various inputs that we'd like to see as deciding what our next five, 10, and maybe even 20 years looks like in this community. You have the resolution itself outlining the members, as well as a memo from Community Development Director, who is here this evening.
Aaron, anything you want to add or talk about the general makeup of the group at this point?
The only thing I would say is that we're looking to have the committee be comprised of 13 to 15 people. We've reached out to, I reached out to, City Council, Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and a number of other boards and commissions to have a good cross-section of the already wonderful work that these boards and committees have brought to the community, and make sure that they have their input into the overall master plan. We've also reached out through the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee for numbers of the public, and I have received a number of interested applicants. Part of the process or the timeframe that we have noted here is the 18 to 24 months. I don't anticipate that this project will last that long. We have budgeted with Carlisle-Wartman, our consultants, for 12 to 18 months for the master plan document itself. But in terms of the Master Plan Steering Committee, not only with the responsibility of helping form the master plan, but will continue on their work and really get those goals and objectives started. So we want to build off of their momentum and get some of those things started, which is why they have a longer, the committee has a longer timeframe of establishment than the actual master plan document itself.
Assuming this, what we have today is to create the committee, when would you like to have this committee fully seated?
As soon as possible. We'd really like to get them on the ground and going. Carlisle-Wartman has already been doing some extensive work on the existing land conditions and things of that nature, but we'd really like to get this going as soon as possible. We do have a number of interested applicants, and we could get them, get their application and materials, resumes, and things before you at the December 2nd meeting, but if you would like to have additional time, we could have them at the 16th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Councilmember Baker? Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for helping bring this together and lead this group going forward. Just a quick question for the folks that haven't necessarily had the opportunity to review the details or have seen the types of roles that we're looking for. Would you mind just sharing with us, like, the different departments and things? It's in the memo, but what would those roles be so that folks that haven't had a chance to see it can kind of visualize the cross-section of representation that we seek?
Sure, absolutely, yep. So part of our resolution, we have included, as I mentioned, 13 to 15 people, so it would be comprised of the City Manager, Matthew Baumgartner, the Community Development Director, myself, one City Council member, one Planning Commission member, one Zoning Board of Appeals member, one Downtown Development Authority member, one member of the Berkeley High School as a student representative, and then six to eight members of various city boards and community members at large.
Great, thank you. It does indeed sound like an impressive roster. I look forward to their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for our Community Development Director? Again, today we are merely creating the ad hoc committee. We have not officially put anybody in there as of yet. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, will these meetings be open to the public, you know, under the Open Meetings Act?
Yes, they would.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, as you've heard today, if you want to be part of this committee, get your information in as quickly as possible, because Community Development Director wants to be able to convene this committee in the very near future. So if this does sound like something that is exciting to be a part of what the vision for the city for the future, please make sure you get that information as quickly as possible. Seeing no additional comments, would, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 3519?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Now move on to item number nine. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R. 3619, matter of ratifying a one-year tentative labor agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Michigan Association of Public Employees.
Is there a motion to approve R. 3619?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Traditionally, ASME has represented our Department of Public Works. Recently, they held an election, and elected to have MAPS to represent them. So MAPS is the Michigan Association of Public Employees. Then, this bargaining unit being fairly new to this organization, they put forth a one-year agreement, which was to negotiate with myself, as well as City's Labor Attorney. We do feel that one year is appropriate, while the new representation has the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the bargaining unit, what their needs are, what some of the operational items and concerns happen to be. And then we plan to use this year to sit down again and discuss a longer-term, more comprehensive approach to this labor agreement. So what both my, both administration as well as the bargaining unit is asking, is that council consider a 12-month agreement outlined in your packet here, one that would include a 50 cent-an-hour raise, which is roughly around 2% for, on average, between those employees, as well as moving to a vacation calculation that's more in line with our merit system. Neither myself, the Labor Attorney, had any issues with this. Finance also had the opportunity to look at this and felt it would not be detrimentally impactful to our community. And our city's finances, as the time that's being outlined here is purely that. There's not a financial component to awarding additional time for the employees. So we feel it's mutually beneficial. It gives these workers time to get some rest, get some feet back from underneath them, knowing them as we do. We know that they'll be chomping at the bit to get right back to work. So we do, again, we foresee a longer agreement coming before this council prior to the sunset.
Questions for Mr. Baumgartner? Seeing none. This was relatively straightforward, as was discussed. Spoke with, you know, the Labor Council as well, before and after, which was in the same sitting, which means it was a relatively brief negotiation.
True, yes, sir.
Which is also beneficial, because it means sides were able to come together and find some common ground pretty quickly. Seeing no additional questions or comments on this, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 3619?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to what I would call the main event of tonight's agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call item number 10?
Ordinance Number O. 1519, matter of considering first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add new Article 15 marijuana businesses to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to adopt local licensing regulations and operational standards for marijuana businesses.
Is there a motion to approve O. 1519?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Okay, so before I throw this over to Mr. Baumgartner, the same rules apply as last week, or last time we discussed this. I see a number of the faces out here, and I'm relatively certain as to why you chose to attend this meeting. Do not come up to this microphone and try to change the metrics because it better fits your business model, or your proposed business model, because we will, I'll just hit this little hammer gavel, and you'll sit back down. This is meant for the council to have a discussion on the metrics and what we want to move forward. Certainly, residents are more than happy, or more than willing, to give their input on this, but please do not tell me why the metric should be changed because you have such-and-such proposal, and you think that it would make the most sense. And the city would just be so lucky to have that as the final model and the final metric, because it fits your specific business. Is that clear? Good? I hope so. With that, Mr. Baumgartner, why don't you tell us where we're at?
Yes, sir, Ms. Mayor. This come before you is the licensing portion of the two-pronged approach that we have taken to permitting marijuana businesses here in the city. The zoning portion has gone back to Planning Commission. We'll be moving through a public hearing on the 26th, and then we'll come back before you for a first reading thereafter. What we're focusing in on tonight is essentially is the how, more than the where. We are, what you have codified here in this draft proposal is exactly the process that we want to go through to allow these businesses. It covers, we believe it's very, very comprehensive. A team of the Community Development Director, myself, my assistant from my office, as well as our city attorney, have been meeting and exchanging various emails to try to get to a point that adequately captures licensing framework that protects the community, as well as makes revivable businesses and the cannabis industry to be located here in Berkeley. I know City Attorney can go through some of the specifics on there, but in summary, I would say we believe that this has responded well to the feedback that we've gotten from the City Council, as well as the Planning Commission. I do want to draw your attention specifically to the public participation components of this. We'll have, we've built in two sections of public participation, not only at the site planning level, where the Planning Commission would essentially be holding a public comment period on the site plan, but also when it comes back to City Council for the final local governing approval, we'll be noticing the homes within 300 feet of the individual location that we're talking about, and again, give those residents the opportunities to respond and comment on their thoughts on the application before, again, it goes to the state for the remainder of that process.
Ms. Attorney, are there other, more, you know, all of the substantive changes between the last time we spoke and this time? Anything that we have not covered, and Mr. Baumgartner didn't cover in his report?
No, I mean, I think he covered in a general way. We got into some more of the specifics when we've looked at this previously. We think that we have addressed the concerns that came up the last time. The Planning Commission had some excellent, specific input as well. We've tried to address all of those things to bring back to you an ordinance that we think is suitable based on the direction that the council has given.
Okay. So we have a few different things that we have to discuss for calling for a vote on this. There are a number of areas. So let's first turn to the merit system point criteria, and then we can move on to the other items. So looking at this metric, which it's crazy, whenever this thing is updated, I don't know about it, but I get 16 phone calls and 25 emails, like, right away. And it's crazy. So why don't you tell us what the big changes were, and what the most recent changes were?
Yes, sir. So the most recent changes attempted to capture feedback that we received from Planning Commission and City Council, saying that there needs to be a mix of considerations, not just for the site, but as well as the applicants themselves. And so previously, in previous iterations, we gave a lot of points at the top end of the scale for, specific to the development itself. Feedback that we received from members of councils said we'd like to see some more reliance for good operators, and some points that can be tallied up, and if they can show that they have a history of being good operators in whatever business they've been in, potentially in whatever community they previously operated in. With that in mind, so we've actually moved up some portions. We have number 17 now. Previously, it was a much lower score, but 17 points allotted to applicants who have successfully operated a state-regulated retail business. We are purposely nonspecific there.
Why don't you talk more about that?
Okay. So if somebody has been operating in any state-regulated retail business, and there are a number of them, but they have generated a track record over time of being able to comply to state standards, in some cases, federal standards as well. They can show and put forth essentially a clean record, or one that meets the caveats that we've placed in the text here, that shows that they have been, for lack of a better word, good operators. They have not run into compliance issues in their chosen fields. They have not had issues where the state has had to come after them for compliance more than once.
It's not less than five offenses in three years.
Yes, so three, yes.
Is that good? Is that a good record?
There's, depending on the, depending on the type of industry they run, like I say, even if it's, those offenses can be as small as, say, locating a fire extinguisher in the right place. And so we try to gauge what a good track record would be. As much as having no offenses, we also want to see whether they, whoever the operator was, has adequately complied to whatever the state has put forth as being an issue. So if they quickly jumped on whatever those problems were, I think that's telling in how they will be operating in a cannabis business here in Berkeley.
So state-regulated retail business, most folks, at least that I've spoken with, and my personal interpretation of that is something that is regulated by the State Liquor Control Commission.
Correct.
Previously, maybe medical marijuana, which we haven't allowed, but potentially. What else fits into that category?
So if somebody has operated a tobacco business, there are state regulations there. We're talking about pharmacies being a state-regulated business.
It seems to me that the only people that may get a bump from this are medical marijuana or liquor store, or potential tobacco store? Is it, I mean, I don't...
Well, I say, I'm trying to think of some other, I know we discussed some previous ones. I don't know if Community Development Director has some thoughts, or City Attorney has some thoughts, but I know we had some more during our conversations. There are, I don't know why I'm thinking of some other ones. I know we discussed some other ones. If you can think of any, please pop in here. I could use you.
Well, that's the thing, there are, yeah, there are other... I don't necessarily, but if we're having trouble coming up with those, I feel like, what are we trying to incentivize here? Is it, it's either a liquor store, medical marijuana, or maybe tobacco, if we're putting that in, or a tobacco store? I don't know why those three entities alone necessarily would mean, and especially if they only had five offenses in three years, is 17 points worth. Like, that's when I saw that change. I'm just in my mind trying to, if I'm reading this, as a resident who's reading this, they think state-regulated, okay, so you're looking for liquor or medical marijuana. Those are probably the top two, and the ones that we have to deal with at the council level. So whatever the intent was, and I think you explained that now, I guess, the question on this council, does that sound like a good number? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I support the intent, but I think this might be, maybe there's a different angle we could come at this, right? There's perhaps another way that we can understand the credibility and the track record of a business that may not fall into one of those three or four categories, because this appears to not rule out certainly, but certainly give a disadvantage to folks if they ran a successful bookstore or something like that, from demonstrating their strong track record and providing, you know, safe, comfortable place for their employees to work, and quality services for their customers. So I like the idea, the intent behind looking for folks that have done a good job running a business. Maybe there's better Business Bureau ratings, or there, maybe there's some kind of complaint agency that folks have a problem with, any kind of business could file. We could use that as a way of indicating the relative success of how they run their shop.
Other comments, Councilmember Gavin, on this?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. I echo what Councilmember Baker says on that front, and also, I think the, you know, the less-than- the less than five offenses in three years, to me, I understand the intent to see how quickly something may have been remedied. I think probably a better indicator to me is that if there wasn't an offense in the first place. Now, realizing that there could be an issue with, like, as, you know, the example you gave with a, you know, a fire extinguisher in the wrong spot, I think, I think we put, we just have a few too many there. I think that having, having that number as high as it is, I think indicates, especially in such a short timeframe, can indicate maybe not necessarily the best actor.
And I don't know the scale. Like you mentioned, five in three years may be awesome in some different types of regulations, but for me, it's more of that state-regulated retail business that I'm hung up on. Mayor Pro Tem?
I just thought about food business, too, because that, I don't know, food is regulated by the state, but I know that in a food business, you are inspected by state inspectors and things like that, so there would be compliance areas there. I just, to all the points that have been made already, I think we need to think about what the intent is here, and what we're incentivizing, as been said before, and do we want to get into the, when you talk about number of offenses, are you going to then look at them on a case-by-case basis? Because if it was something more innocuous, as opposed to some larger thing, we certainly wouldn't want to have that held against someone, but we also wouldn't want a larger offense, or giving a license to someone that has a larger offense.
True.
So, maybe that's a second piece of it. But I think that as a business owner, I think that, you know, when you operate a business, you're held to certain standards, in terms of, you know, ethics, Better Business Bureau, and all those things. And granted, like a bookstore, or a knitshop, you know, I have not had any offenses in the knitting store, just FYI, but, you know, it's a different playing field, and so I think we just, we need to take another look at that piece, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, two comments related to this. One is, I think putting any number here is a real challenge. For example, you could have a very large organization, and they could very easily have five, very minor, you know, in their fifty stores, and some place with one storefront has five, and, you know, that is an entirely different picture. And I forget my second point.
While you're thinking about it, I also have some quibbles with the word successfully. Especially if we take out that, then what is successfully mean? I think that's very difficult to quantify, and will be certainly up to interpretation, which I think we're trying to keep as much interpretation out of this as possible, and just try to be as objective here. Boom, 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 and I just, I worry that that just opens us up for what we already know is potentially coming down the road anyway, in litigation, but I just feel like that is a scary word.
I think you can easily remove that word. Those are good comments.
That the needing to define successfully is what led to having a specific number and number of years, so removing one does constitute removing the other one?
So, where at? Applicant has operated state-regulated retail business in Michigan. Any state-regulated, I guess, state. Yeah. Councilmember Henan, sorry, did you come back to your point?
Yeah, I do remember my point, and it is exactly this, that we, like, well, we're not picking which businesses are going to be successful and not. We do want to try and pick ones that have the ability to be successful, and one that has worked, let's say, successfully in a highly regulated industry in the past, will have demonstrated that they do have the experience to be successful in a similar, you know, sort of industry. That does not mean other retailers could not be successful, but I think it does, I think it gets to the intent here, that it does show that I think there is a better chance that they would be successful.
And I do think there is something to be said for that. If you've played in the state's sandbox before, you know there are pretty stringent rules, sorry, Senator, on what you have to do or not do. And there is some value to that, but when I saw seventeen points for a couple of other things that I was not entirely sure of how that was going to work, that raised some quick flags. So, at this point, we are applicant has successfully operated state-regulated retail business, or, sorry, applicant has operated state-regulated retail business in Michigan. So, that being the case, I do think that is valid, but I don't know that it's seventeen points valid now. Because now you can have more than five offenses.
And just as a note, this portion can be changed, regardless of the ordinance language as well. But we do need some caveat saying that they not just ran it, but.
Well, we also don't want to change this thing every week.
Did it well. True. Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else on, or not that there are, but other councilmembers, before I come back in here with something else, on the merit system first, and then we'll go back to the ordinance?
I had a couple of quick questions. Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I was thinking more about, you know, how this helps drive the kinds of things, and folks that have tried to reach out to me, just like you, I tend to get a lot of communications. My policy has been to respectfully decline invitations, so I don't actually know what folks are, would see as a good number or a bad number, from their perspectives. But having said that, as I think about the kinds of things we want to try to drive, I appreciate that the property will be owner-occupied is on the list. I was wondering if that might be something a little higher up in the number scale. And I was also wondering about, I understand, again, speaking of intent and all of that stuff, I just wonder if it merits the points associated with it. The third one from the top, I do kind of wish these were numbered, or lettered, or something, so we could refer to it a little bit easier, but the site being located along eleven mile, or Woodward, or twelve mile, from Coolidge to Woodward, I do appreciate the thought process behind that, in that those areas haven't received the level of focus and attention that our DDA does, because we do have a DDA. But at the same time, I think that if somebody wants to set up shop in the DDA, they shouldn't, you know, because that's quite a hefty number there. What is that, eighteen points or something for that? I would hope that the quality of those properties in the areas designated here would merit their own level of interest in developing those, for lots of other reasons besides trying to score the eighteen points. So, I get the thought process behind that, I just don't think that it's eighteen points worth. I think, again, just me here, and then to contrast that, I think the owner-occupied might be a good eighteen pointer. Maybe flip those, or something like that. I guess I've made my, just expressed my thoughts, that I get the thing by, I get the intent behind the locations, but I wouldn't want to disincentivize somebody from choosing to make our downtown even greater.
I actually would have to disagree with you. It has nothing to do with the DDA, but there's a reason incentivizing those areas, especially when you look at some of the other parts of the metric. It would be very difficult, in my estimation, to be able to get enough points, based on a lot of the other things, to justify when you're working in the confines of our downtown area, which is developed, whereas most of these areas mentioned here are certainly lacking in development, and are in need of redevelopment. And I think that will go a long way to help those areas, from a development perspective, especially if the proposed redevelopment includes additional non-marijuana businesses with separate means of ingress egress, no accessory use to marijuana business, but a separate entity, and some of the other items that are on here, physical improvements to the area around the property, other areas, trees, plazas, green space. Not that that's not possible in the downtown area, but we have a very developed area already, and then we have a number of other areas that are not part of the DDA that are lacking for development or redevelopment.
If I may, I think, I hear what you're saying, I think a lot of the other things, where you get points for the other types of more prescriptive improvements, could more than make up for the lack of that. I'm not saying to strike that, I'm just saying maybe take the one off the front, something like that.
Such an important one.
I'm just kind of, just sharing where I'm coming from.
No, and I agree. And then that's why we're having this conversation right now, because if we're having these conversations, certainly residents and other folks are also having these conversations. That's why it's so important for us to do that. So, here's what I'm going to do, because this conversation, as Mr. Baumgart mentioned, does not have to be over today with the metric. I do want to make sure that we at least move through the ordinance, and can make a determination on whether or not we are comfortable moving forward with this first reading today. So, as it relates to the ordinance, questions or comments, I shouldn't say questions, but comments from council on the ordinance?
My name's Brian Binkley. I have a question. Is there a certain percentage that a person has to own of the business in order to qualify? And the reason why I'm asking that is the way it's written, it sounds like a person that owns a liquor store, that can divide it in half, that's in Berkeley, which, I don't know, there's, you can probably count them on one hand, hits almost everything, especially if they're a resident of Berkeley, if that makes sense. So, I'm just wondering if, you know, for instance, myself, I own a business in Berkeley, very successful business, I'm on Woodward, I'm in the area, I have retail experience before this, twenty years, but it wasn't regulated. So, does that mean, in order to score points, I have to partner with somebody that owned a grocery store, I mean, a liquor store, because you really can't partner with someone that had a dispensary in Berkeley, because there wasn't one? And if so, what percentage have they, I mean, what's the cutting line of, have we thought of that, or?
Yes.
I don't know if it's a silly question, but.
No, no, it's not. We have thought of that, and that's why the metric is set up the way that it is, and why we're having this conversation today. I don't think just because somebody owns a liquor store, that means that they're going to be able to successfully apply to do what you mentioned, based on our metric right here.
I'm not saying they could, but they're going to score a heck of a lot of points.
They might. Yes. Mr. Baumgart, anything you want to add in terms of the metric for that?
Sure. Any of our businesses would score points per our metric if they decided to move into the cannabis business, but as long as they are a majority owner or stakeholder in an existing business, they would receive some points there, as well as being, as long as they don't opt to displace their existing business, they would receive some points as well. If you're just splitting a building and getting into basically saying, you know, we're going to do one and one, that there are still a number of different things on our system that you would have to do over and above, just simply partitioning the two businesses and moving forward. There's points scored now for a green, a stormwater management plan that incorporates green infrastructure, redevelopment of a property, utilizing renewable or sustained infrastructure. The existing building would have had to have been up to fifty percent vacant or underused prior to going into this. So, to the mayor's point, we have thought of a lot of these questions, and we do try to gear this towards sort of a preferred outcome, and that would be to any property owner, not just merely, as you said, a liquor store owner. I think some of the changes the council made, even here this evening, opens up now the definition, so any Berkeley business owner could get some additional benefits.
Okay.
Okay, so what you're saying, though, is it would have to be, it'd almost have to be a fifty-fifty split if you did something like that, or if you did?
We can talk through a couple scenarios, if you'd like, at a different time. I'd love to hear kind of what your thoughts are. I'm not seeing it that way, but I want to make sure that there's many eyes on this, and then we can have the chance to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the ordinance proper. Problems, questions, comments with the ordinance? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. I just had one comment. On section thirty-nine oh seven, License Renewal Applications E1, it specifically calls out fire inspectors. They're not called out in the initial licensing thing. I would hope that that is implied, that there would be fire inspections, but was called out in the renewal, but not called out in the thing, so as long as we're planning on having the initial fire inspection report.
Yes, sir, we are. And then especially in the course of site plan approvals for the new business, and that would need to be a continued practice into renewals as well, even though they're not going specifically through site plan, we name specifically the, basically the standards that they will have, continue to have to meet, even after renewals, even after a renewal process is in place, more so than just their existing initial licensing applications.
And they would also be required in the same two-year cycle for inspections like we have for other businesses. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That applies now to both owner-occupied and leased space, so they would apply.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
While we're speaking about renewals, if we find an applicant has, let's say, exaggerated or embellished their original, saying how many jobs they were going to bring in, and that was an important criteria, and those don't materialize, maybe because it was a fiction to begin with, or maybe no fault of their own, is that, when we look at the renewal, especially if we were misled, is that a grounds for denying a renewal?
We feel it is. Yes, sir. Had they not, both on our side, as well as reporting that to the state as a non-truth, we would be in very good position, we think, to deny that license for renewal.
I would think not only a renewal, but if there was some misleading, or potentially fraudulent statements, maybe that would be grounds for revocation. We wouldn't even necessarily wait for renewal.
Good.
Sure. Looking at, this is on page nineteen, section thirty-nine one three A, just a small but important error there. Nothing in this article shall be construed, skipping a little, to allow use, possession, or control of marijuana for, it says, lawful purposes. I believe that should be for unlawful purposes.
Very good catch.
And then, the only other comment I really have is, you know, a drum I've been beating all along, is I can't support medical, I can't support recreational at the federal level. And I'm just gauging, is there any support for medical-only at the rest of council?
We're going to take a quick straw poll.
That would be.
Councilmember Henan has spoken of being okay, or being able to support medical marijuana, but not recreational marijuana. Quick straw poll, do you have an issue with recreation? And we'll just figure this out now. Councilmember Blanchard?
My initial comments, we started this a couple months ago, was I preferred medical marijuana rather than recreational marijuana, so stick with that.
Sure what that means. So, medical?
Medical.
Okay.
I'm in support of representing what I see as the will of the residents, and supporting adult-use recreational marijuana.
Okay. Councilmember Baker?
Recreational, both.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Oath.
Councilmember Henan, is it fair to say I'm not, okay? Councilmember Gavin?
Both.
Okay. I also am, again, because it seems to be what I've heard from most of our residents and our voters, supporting both in this case. We understand, you've made it clear, and that's your right, and that's, you're certainly elected to be able to make that vote, so you'd be able to do that. Other issues with, or questions, I should say, with this text as written, I know we have probably read it a number of times in various iterations, but it also has been out on the city's website, and it's been very public, all of the information for this throughout the entire conversation, and will continue to be that way. I want to make sure folks have an opportunity to look at it. Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I defer.
You yield.
And I'll go next.
I did have a number of.
You yield, you're out.
Okay, bye-bye.
I did have a number of notes and questions, mostly small points, asking for clarification. I spoke with our city manager today, I passed along my notes, and I believe that they will all be clarified and reflected in the draft for our second reading, so nothing specific tonight.
Nothing substantive?
Nothing substantive.
Okay. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you for the second chance here. I do, more of a process question. We began the dialogue about the scoring numbers themselves, understood some areas where we have general alignment on some tweaks, and there's a couple of spots that we might consider further dialogue. Moving forward, if we were to approve this tonight as a first reading, what would be our process for revisiting that conversation? Is that a work session? Is that a separate item on a subsequent agenda? Would that be bundled in with the second reading? And then what if we didn't reach alignment on this as part of the second reading? All that kind of stuff. So, I'm just wondering, what's next?
So, we intend to bring the merit system point, the merit system point criterias back to you in the form of resolution for adoption, and so that will be the only point where if passed out, it becomes final. We can continue, I'll continue to accept feedback from, for city council members, and try to update in a way that reflects it, and share that with the city council members as well, so that any council member who feels strongly by an issue can see that change reflected in the draft. I could very well continue to bring this portion back to council. I could very well continue to bring this portion back to council as we see appropriate, hopefully before a resolution document needs to be signed and approved. So, to answer the question more directly, I'll continue to take the feedback individually with council members, have this come, have a proposed draft come back to council one time, for conversational purposes, before it comes before you as a draft document for approval by resolution, if that...
Has there been any change in the timeline at the state level?
Yes, I keep, they're sort of all over the board here, there are some things that could be approved as early as next month, but there's some things that, there are some things that seem to be reading that looks like it could be early spring, so we're still ahead of what I've heard officially from the state so far.
So, moving forward with the ordinance tonight as a first reading, still enabling us to have conversations as it relates to the merit system, which will be passed by resolution, we still should have plenty of time, and it's not that we're necessarily in a rush, anyway, we want to do this thing the right way, not just get it done by the first, but the state pushing back some guideline, or some deadlines to march gives us a little bit more wiggle room as well.
That's correct, and the language remained consistent in the draft ordinance, that the city manager, myself, would open up an application period, and so we would not even be able to accept applications on the state's timeline until my office allows applications to be in hand, so we are protected in that way, which is one of the reasons why administration is not calling for any changes to our moratorium timeline.
Okay. Any other questions on the ordinance? Seeing none, thank you all for playing so nicely. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O 1519 as a first reading?
Henin?
No.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number 11 on tonight's agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read R 3719?
Resolution number R 3719, matter of designating the time and place of city council meetings and its rules and order of procedure.
Is there a motion to approve R 3719?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support from Mayor Protem, Dean. Mr. Baumgartner, what are we looking at here?
Mr. Mayor, annually, the council takes a look at its rules and procedures, and makes some adjustments as needed. As you recall, we just revisited this document back in September to make some adjustments. What you have in front of you is a proposed amendment from Councilmember Henin concerning Article, Section 8, and the addition, the edit to Section 8, my apologies, and the addition of a Section 14. And so you have the text of those proposals in front of you, I believe they were also disseminated to members as well.
So, before we get to those, any other issue, or issues, I say that too many times, any other questions or changes, proposed changes to our rules and order of procedure? Assuming, nothing right now at this point, okay, so we'll move on there. Section 5, do we have any issues in Section 5? Okay, we're doing well. Section 6, we made changes in here previously into filling vacancies, well, not for boards or commissions, but for council at least. That's in Section 7, we did quite a big update there. Any changes or proposed changes in 6 or 7 appointments? And then we will, when we get down to one, might as well, Section 8 right now, there was a proposed change there, Councilmember Henin, do you want to briefly?
Right, the suggestion is to change our paper of record from the Daily Tribune to the Woodward Talk. Some of the hesitation in the past for that has been that it is a weekly instead of a daily, and that they have quite an advanced, you have to, the deadline's Friday for it to arrive Wednesday or Thursday. Speaking today with both the city clerk and the community development director, they do not see a problem with us moving to the Woodward Talk, they think they would still be able to meet all of the necessary deadlines for public hearings, and it has the advantage that it is delivered to every household in the city for free, unlike the Tribune.
As you mentioned, we've, I've seen, we've talked about this, I think, every year for probably the last 10 years at least, as to why we are continuing with the Daily Tribune, no offense to the Daily Tribune, but it just seems as though the readership is down a little bit in the city, maybe, and not as many folks are having an opportunity to see these postings, and the reasons you mentioned were always the reasons why we did, so if, but if our city clerk is certainly on board with the Woodward Talk, it makes sense, and you don't see any issues, that's the most important thing, as long as you're happy with postings, and the community development director is happy with the postings.
Yes, absolutely, we're fine with that.
Anybody on council have any issues?
We talked about it in the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee as well, and I believe that that committee would also be in support of this.
It does go to everybody.
I have a question.
Sure.
Was there a problem with the way it was happening, or did we become aware of, like, I'm not seeing this, I, it's, I guess...
I haven't seen one since 1988.
Okay.
Not that I've been made aware of.
It was even going to their website to try and find it, you know, actively looking for one that I knew was out there, often I could not find it, even though I know it was published legally, but, you know, it was very challenging to find.
Thank you.
As long as the Woodward Talk and their circulation, as you mentioned, it's not an issue, the fact that it doesn't come out daily, as the Daily Tribune would imply, that is my biggest concern.
Mayor, if I may, just very briefly, there's a number of considerations that, or factors, rather, the council can consider quality of service, frequency of service, the cost, whatever the cost is to the city to publish our things, but probably the most paramount consideration in picking your official newspaper is you want one that's going, where these notices are actually going to reach
Right.
the most people within the city, to actually be able to get and respond to these notices. It doesn't do much good to have a bargain newspaper that only a small percentage of your populace reads, as opposed to, it sounds like with the Woodward Talk, it reaches pretty much everybody who has a mailbox or a newspaper holder to place it in, so that should be your paramount consideration in choosing the official paper.
And, if I could just make a note for those here, and the millions watching at home, the state actually mandates that the council has a paper of record, I know discussing a newspaper may seem just a little bit old-fashioned, we do supplement our public notices through electronic means, but just as a process, no, we are required to have a paper of record.
And it will now be the Woodward Talk, it sounds like, anybody on board with that?
Good.
Moving on, 9, 10, 11, 12, those are all sentences, Section 13, there's probably going to be more coming to that at a later date. That brings us up to the proposed addition of a Section 14.
Right, and this is just an effort for us to increase our transparency with the community, and we all have it in front of us, but I'll read it for everybody at home. Proposed ordinances must be provided to the city council on the city website, and be made available for review at the city clerk's office at least two weeks before the first reading, with the exception of emergency ordinances or other time-sensitive legislation, which still must be provided as above as soon as possible, within the two-week time period. Every ordinance shall have endorsed thereon the name of the city manager, city attorney, and/or council member or members introducing it.
Okay, we have proposed addition from Councilmember Henin, thoughts or feedback on this proposed Section 14?
At the same time.
That's all right, go ahead.
Okay, cool, well, you know, certainly the idea of having the information available sooner to more folks is always a great idea. My only potential question on the timing might be, there are months when we have two meetings in a month, and there's a two-week window there, and so this might put a burden on staff to prepare for not one, but two meetings at the same time, essentially, so I'm wondering if one week might be sufficient, to have it out more than, more than a week ahead of the next meeting, so that we meet the spirit of the good intent here, and yet not put too much of a burden on staff. I think a week would still give us a lot more time than we have today to review these things, and so, just wanted to offer that as a friendly amendment.
I think that's a reasonable consideration.
Councilmember Gavin?
Took the words right out of my mouth.
I think it's reasonable.
Well, that, also, and Councilmember Baker as well, so...
Anybody have an issue with one week? Seems as a reasonable.
I have a question for the city manager, is this going to increase the workload on the staff, can the staff accommodate that, because we're running things longer, so...
Councilmember, the workload doesn't change, just, we need to, we'll just acclimate to the timeline, that'll be the only difference here.
You got to get things out faster.
We do, we already aspire to do so, and this gives, this gives us a hard timeline to meet now.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we've done what I'd consider to be a model job with getting information out on marijuana, because we knew that so many folks were going to want to see it, and, you know, have a chance to read through it and give some feedback. Some of these ordinances may not necessarily want to be time-sensitive, whereas the time, adding an additional week is not going to make or break us, the language would be in here, especially for time-sensitive legislation, when we do need to be able to move, we do have that latitude if the state decides that we have to make some changes, or county, something that has to be responded to right away, we are able to do that, but I think as a general rule, sitting with the city manager and the city attorney, trying to make sure the agenda is worked out for the meeting, and making sure that we have all had an opportunity, one, to see it on Wednesday before it gets sent out to everybody on Friday, but making sure that city attorney has ample time to go over that as well, and just not, you know, it's not a attempt to be less transparent, what has happened in the past, it just seems that that's when things ultimately can finally get turned in, so if we can become acclimated to, look, you want it on the agenda, that's awesome, but if it's an ordinance, it's got to be in there a week in advance. Give us that lead time, time to put it up, time for everyone to read it before.
I think it's fairly common from one municipality to the next to have deadlines, they may vary from a week to 10 days to three days, it's probably never a good practice to just have ordinances show up the day of, or the weekend before the meeting, it just makes it hard for the public, it makes it hard for council to give a thoughtful
Sure.
consideration, and I think it disciplines everybody, not just staff, but council or anybody else who's proposing legislation, to make sure that it does get submitted in time to go through this process and make its way to the agenda prep meeting and review and so on, at least a week before. I would just remind council as well, I mean, occasionally, occasionally there are time crunches, not necessarily emergencies, but once in a while, just the way the meetings fall, or don't fall, we've had a few of those where all of a sudden, holy smokes, it's a month before the next meeting if we don't meet this one, or where we're trying to dovetail a planning commission meeting, where maybe they're, they're making a recommendation on something the week before that would be coming to council. With that, there will be those occasions, because this is a council rule, the council always has the authority to waive that rule for that particular item, so I'm just mentioning that this is good to have a deadline, it's good to discipline all ourselves, but it doesn't necessarily have to handcuff you when those circumstances arise, where it just makes a lot of sense to move something on a little less notice.
Which I think we've all seen, and that makes perfect sense, and is reasonable, as we mentioned. Okay, seeing no additional questions or comments or changes, adding in that Section 14, as mentioned, Councilmember Henin, good with that? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 3719? Now, is that right? Yeah, okay.
Yes, correct. Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number 12 on tonight's agenda, which is M 9319.
Motion number M 9319, matter of approving the 2020 and 2021 city council regular meeting calendar.
Is there a motion to approve M 9319? So moved.
Or...
Councilmember Gavin, a lot of people spoke, but I think I did hear Mayor Protem say something before, and she's on my left, sorry. Jack?
Just good ear.
Just closer. All right, Mr. Baumgartner, we have a couple years, next couple years we're looking at here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, trying something new this year, instead of approving just merely an annual calendar, we were able to sit down, city clerk was able to do some fantastic work, and actually allow council to adopt the schedule for the entirety of the 38th council, and so it's an approach that we'd like to see carry forward, if council enjoys it this evening and elects to approve it, so that is the reason for the change here, otherwise it's a fairly routine item coming before this body.
Any big changes that we need to be aware of, Ms. Clerk, anything we're looking at for 2020, obviously we have potentially three elections that we have planned in there.
2020, yes.
Yes.
And there is one typo, thank you, Councilmember Henin, for finding it, the final meeting in 2021 would be on December 20th, not the 21st.
Councilmember Baker?
I could also add, just to the left of that, the June 1st 20120, that's, I hope to be around that far in the future, but I may have an extra digit in there, just for fun.
Thank you.
Any, aside from those corrections, as far as the days in the schedule? Now, May, our budget work sessions are not
Correct.
on here, as of yet?
No, but they'll, they'll be in the normal time, they'll be in the middle of May. We did continue the practice, Mr. Mayor, of altering the August schedule to accommodate cruises fast as well.
Which we appreciate. Mr. Turner?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor, this is the first time we're doing this two-year program, or scheduling, just a question for the manager and the clerk, is the intention that next year at this time, we would be coming back with a 2021 and 2022 calendar? The only reason I ask is under the Open Meetings Act, we are supposed to, on an annual basis, designate the upcoming calendar year's meetings, I just...
So, we discussed this on off-year, we can affirm, we affirm that second, that second year?
That's the point, we will need to take some action next year, whether it's reaffirming, or whether it's adding another year on.
Yes, reaffirming the schedule for the 38th council, and then the following year would be the 39th, and following two years, I should say. Any other questions or comments on this? It's nice to see you have two years mapped out right there.
That's nice, yeah.
Schedule your vacations.
That's right, I mean, December 21st, December 20th, 2021's a long time away. All right, seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 9319?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Move on to item number 13, please, on tonight's agenda.
Special meeting, matter of scheduling a special city council meeting to be held on Monday, November 25th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, to consider adopting a resolution to convene in closed session upon adjournment of the special meeting to consult with the city's attorneys regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation, specifically 27799 Woodward LLC versus Berkeley, Oakland County Circuit Court case number 2017-159355-ZZ, due versus Berkeley, Oakland County Circuit Court case number 2017-157459-NZ, and Hanover Insurance Group versus Berkeley, Oakland County Circuit Court case number 2017-160247-NZ.
So, there is no action that needs to be taken on this item, this is merely making sure that everybody is aware that there will be a special meeting next Monday at 7:00. Those are the things that will be discussed, but there is no reason to make a motion, second support, or vote on this, it is more informational at this point, and speaking with the city attorney earlier, sometimes, you know, we've had special meetings, we haven't had a council meeting before when it's been planned, so we haven't been able to post that it's going to be happening, we're able to do that, knowing that we have to have an additional meeting and... We're able to do that knowing that we have to have an additional meeting and just assume that tonight would probably not be great for a lengthy closed session after all of the action that we had today. So that is happening again on November 25th. Are there any questions or comments about that?
And just to clarify my own understanding and for the public, there would be no action taken that night. It is only...
Right, we will, we will meet. We will convene into closed session, we'll call them in order, we'll go to closed session. We are not taking any action. We'll come back after and...
This will be an update for council. No action or direction from council requiring us to come back out for a formal motion or resolution will be needed. So the, the actual special meeting will only be however long it takes to move to go in a closed session.
Okay.
Thank you.
And with that, Ms. Mitchell, what is next up on tonight's agenda?
We have communications, starting with Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you.
We have about 22 minutes, Jack.
I'll go quick. First of all, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Price to the council. Glad to have you onboard. I'm sure you'll have a lot of things to do there. Topic tonight is Thanksgiving safety. I put some brochures over there on Thanksgiving safety and fire safety and stuff, so hope that we can get through Thanksgiving without having any fire runs because I like to enjoy my Thanksgiving without having to run around. Some, a couple, some key facts about fires. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires, followed by Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, and the day before Thanksgiving. In 2017, U.S. Fire Department responded to an estimated 1,600 homes, cook, home cooking fires on Thanksgiving Day. Unattended cooking was by far the leading contributing factor to cooking fires and fire deaths. And I watched a video today of somebody trying to cook a frozen turkey in a hot oil.
Oh.
If you haven't gone on YouTube and seen that, as they, the fire department, actually this is a demonstration, they lower this turkey into this boiling oil and catch the whole building on fire. So if you're going to do deep frying a turkey, let me know. We'll send the fire engine over, stand by. Be ready for it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes. So I want to start by thanking everyone, city manager, city attorney, many members of council have reached out to me just to catch me up to speed, let me know of how things go on. Some, it's just been very helpful over the last week figuring out what I need to figure out in the next, the following months to come. I look forward to connecting with department heads as part of my orientation. I'll be sending emails out to them to just ask them to sit down with me and let me know about the status of their departments and what I, as a council member, can do to support them and to connect with residents. So stay tuned for dates of upcoming Chat with Nats or Coffee with Price, I don't know what we're going to call them, but they will be coming and I look forward to connecting with residents in a variety of hours, variety of locations to connect with as many residents as possible. Although I am not yet officially a liaison for any committees, am I? Could I announce that? I don't know. I have been regularly attending the communication, or the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee as the chair up until now, so I can provide some updates from that committee. That committee is in the process of providing feedback to city staff on the website, design companies, and volunteer organization portals. And we're reaching out now to many of the invested groups within Berkeley, the city clubs, departments, to see if they are interested in using a city-focused volunteer organization portal to recruit and manage and organize volunteers. I'm very grateful too to Tori and Councilmember Blanchard for collaborating on our updated, completely revised communications master plan. It is extensive. It is impressive. We will be spending the next month reviewing that and providing more feedback on that. Sorry, I shouldn't say "we" anymore. The committee will be and I will be the liaison there at the committee. And since I do need to step down from participating as a member of that committee, the committee is now accepting applicants for that seat that I had. So looking for engaged residents who are interested in advising the council and city on communications, how to best engage residents, please apply to the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Honors. A couple of quick things as well. Technology Advisory Committee meets in two days' time, Wednesday, the 20th, at 6:30. And they too are reaching out to other committees to understand better about the ways that they can help enable the technology needs for those groups. One of the things that they'll be paying particular focus on is some requests from the Historical Committee. They've had a chance to get together and talk about some of the needs with the folks at the, in the museum, so I'm excited to see those two groups collaborating. And in a tangential item related to that, the Berkeley Robotics Team had their fundraiser at Hardfield Lanes last week, Sunday. It was tremendous, 36 Lane sponsors chipped in to help support the event that night and all the students and mentors had a great time. I've been a big fan of that group for years and gone to many of their competitions and it's a tremendous way for, for the students to learn not only about robotics, because it is fun to build those things, but about teamwork and marketing and project management and budgets and all those kind of cool things that you have to deal with once you are done on the robotics team. So that, so that was awesome. And one of, Go Bears, Team 247. The Downtown Development Authority met last week, DDA met on the 13th. They were in the process of contract negotiations with an applicant to fill the void, the vacated executive director spot. That person took a different position in the interim here, so now the board will be resuming the search for an executive director for the DDA. And the Small Business Saturday Shopping Experience is coming up on November 30th. And so I'd like to encourage everybody to, to keep it local and help, help support our Berkeley businesses here on the 30th. The Historical Committee, congratulations and thanks to them for the work that they did on the Veterans Display as part of the, the Veterans Day Ceremony and Events, which, which the city did a terrific job with. And the museum was happy to be a part of that. They will be open for the Holiday Lights Parade coming up, so if you want to come in before or after the parade and warm up and have some hot chocolate and cookies and learn a little bit more about the city's history, they'd love to, to see you in the museum located conveniently right next to the gazebo where Santa will be hanging out. And they're also open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, except for holidays and stuff like that, and Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I won't talk too much more about the transit work as you, as you may know, Berkeley has been a longtime leader in the Woodward Corridor aspects of the region transit discussions. And so we're very excited to see that, that we're continuing and we look forward to, to continuing to partner with our neighbors to help represent a strong Woodward Corridor as part of the broader vision for our extended region. And to Eileen, I have a quote from Abe Lemmons, who once said, "The only problem with retirement is that you never get a day off." And so I hope that she, I hope that she enjoys that very much. And again, want to thank her for, for her leadership and efforts and work here in the city for, among so many other endeavors that she's done for all this time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I, along with councilmembers Price and Henan, attended the Veterans Ceremony November 11th at the gazebo. And just to piggyback on what you're saying, the Historical Society did do an incredible job with that exhibit, but it was truly a moving ceremony and I, I'm sorry that Councilmember Blanchard wasn't able to be there. I thank you for your service, not only in the military, but to continue, all your continued service for the city. Thank you so much for that. I have some announcements regarding the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. November 22nd, ninja-themed Parents Night Out. December 9th, the Senior Holiday Luncheon is at Farina's. It's almost sold out, so if you want a ticket, call Parks and Rec. Vacation camp will be held over the holidays. Again, for any of these events, either call Parks and Rec or you can sign up on the website. And December 14th, the Berkeley Junior Women's Club is hosting the Candy Cane Lane Craft Show at the Community Center. I too, piggybacking on Councilmember Price's statement, I started some really great conversations at the doors while canvassing, campaigning over the months and I do plan to continue those conversations. I don't have a catchy name. I don't even have a name for them yet, but stay tuned for time and place because that was the one thing, it was probably the most grueling piece of campaigning, but it was absolutely the most rewarding because I met people and heard things that I wouldn't have had I not been out knocking on the doors. So thank you to all the residents who let me listen. Thank you for opening your door and telling me about what's important to you. And Councilmember Stedman, just a few words. Eileen, thank you so much for your mentorship and guidance when I was appointed, Councilmember Gavin and I, almost two years ago-ish. Eileen just has a very steady presence and her knowledge and experience over the years is such a gift that she chose to share with us and I will be forever grateful and probably will continue to reach out to her for her insight and input, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yes. I was hoping Councilmember Blanchard would give us a live demonstration of frozen turkey in a fryer. In their last meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals denied a request to allow a home addition to be built five feet closer to the sidewalk than allowed by code. They'll be meeting again on December 9th at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. They have two cases to hear already. With the Tree Board, we had one member, Kathy Carlos, who spent about 100 hours manually entering data from a 1995 tree survey that was done of the public trees in Berkeley. And it turned out some useful information. At that time, our trees were 66% maples and that's one of the reasons, you know, it helped support why we no longer offer maples for sale in the annual sale. It's best not to have a monoculture so you don't have a Dutch elm disease type of thing and shows that we need to increase the diversity of our tree species. With that in mind, the Tree Board has been researching ways that they could conduct a new tree survey, including the health of our tree stock and gathering some information on the costs and grant opportunities to help us defray the expenses if council should choose to go that way. For folks at home, if you ordered a tree from the city this summer, they'll be delivered and planted after they've gone dormant and the ground has frozen, maybe earlier than expected this year, but probably sometime in December. Trees, the reason is trees transplanted this way just have a higher survival rate. When you get the tree, you'll shortly after that get instructions for care, but there won't be anything you need to do until the spring. And if you have any questions, contact the Department of Public Works. The Tree Board doesn't have a December meeting, so they'll next be meeting on January 13th. And then finally, I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our newly elected members and I also wanted to thank Eileen Stedman for all of her service and, and her help to me when I started and her historic perspective and just all the commitment she's given to the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission...
Just by the way.
Okay, I will be well under that, I promise.
Not just you. It's a team game.
So Planning Commission, there was a lot of what we saw here tonight, certainly with the daycare, kinder care that came in front, some discussions on marijuana establishments within the city and also initial discussions on the Master Plan Steering Committee as well. So next meeting, as mentioned...
Quickly, relax. Okay, we will let Councilmember Price suspend the rules and her personal...
The next meeting is November 26th at 7:00 PM here in the chambers. Coolage Task Force, the next meeting will be December 5th in the Public Safety Conference Room. And then the Environmental Advisory Committee, we recap the successful electronics recycling day and we're still waiting to hear back from soccer, I believe. I don't, I don't think Derek has heard back unless you've heard it. Okay. On the tonnage that was prevented from going into landfills, but we did have an average of about 30 cars per hour that were out there. So thank you to all who volunteered and participated and it seems like it was a great success. So, and then of course, echo my colleagues' comments, you know, welcome to Councilmember Price and I look forward to working with you. And of course, to former Councilmember Stedman, Eileen, thank you for the dedication and the work you so selflessly gave for so many years to the city. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be quick as well. I, I do want to mirror the thank yous that Eileen, or given to Eileen, I'm not doing a great job being quick. I want to thank Eileen as well, both professionally, when I started as the manager and with having her as a council member, but also as, when me and my family became new residents of Berkeley, she was a great warm welcome and so I really will miss working with her quite a bit, but as, as the mayor read in the resolution, I know that she will not be far. Couple of updates for, on Coolage, the counters are out now, getting recounts on the traffic volumes and speeds and all the other good information that we need for Coolage itself. We do have a, a good amount of other data that I would like to be, that we'll be presenting to council on the second. We are still looking to put together a public community meeting. Unfortunately, we had on the, unfortunately, we had the 21st on there. That is not going to be likely, that's not going to be, we're not going to be able to hold that date at this point, so we'll be rescheduling that date. I want to draw everybody's attention to YouTube or Facebook, wherever the social media of your preference is. We just put out a video with, featuring our own city clerk discussing elections as well as the census coming up, an incredibly important topic that you'll be hearing a ton about, not just locally, but across the country as well. And so we were able to kick off that conversation with a great video that was put out this week. And last but not least, just want to wish from staff and administration a happy Thanksgiving to Berkeley residents as well as the council.
Ma'am Clerk, do you have anything this evening?
I'll just say a quick thank you to everyone involved in the November 5th election. We had a great turnout, near 28%. And thank you to the voters, everyone at City Hall, every city department plays a large role, DPW, Community Center, Library, so it was very successful and thank you to everyone.
Congratulations and it was a nice warm-up for what I anticipate will be a little more exciting in 2020.
Yes.
Mr. Attorney?
One item. Senator McMorro gave a very thorough legislative update earlier. One additional state legislative item that we have been monitoring and have reported about to city council before was proposed legislation introduced in the House, State House this year, which would have amended the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act to largely preempt and, and limit local authority to regulate short-term rentals of residential premises. My understanding, based on information I received just a few days ago, which I've reported to the, the manager and the Community Development Director, is that that proposed legislation has stalled and is unlikely to be acted on this term. And I just mention that to you because that is a topic that the city has looked at from time to time. I know maybe it's been a year or so, but our Planning Commission was looking at the possibility of regulating short-term rentals. So apparently that's still fair game if, if we go that route. But it did seem earlier in the year that there was a good chance that we were going to see yet another limitation on our local authority. Fortunately, it doesn't appear to be happening anytime soon.
Thank you. A few quick comments. One, I was going to congratulate the clerk on, on her first successful run here. Things went very smoothly. I don't think we had any, any huge surprises, as I mentioned. This was a nice warm-up for 2020. You know, again, want to reiterate my thanks to Eileen for her years of service. I was humbled to be re-elected in the position that I'm in right now, which will, if I, if I make it through the next two years, will be 14 years serving the city of Berkeley. Will not be catching Eileen and her years of service, but it is an honor just to be able to, to serve the residents in this community and have another two years left to, to do that. I also want to welcome Councilmember Natalie Price. And yes, you do have some liaison commitments. You get three of them. I bet you couldn't even guess which three they are, but the CAC, the Library Board, and the Beautification Committee. We will work out the, the rest of the logistics. Those are the roles that Councilmember Stedman had and you and I have already spoken about those and are okay moving forward with, with those roles as well in the future. So welcome, look forward to working with you over the next two years. Winter arrived a bit earlier than we anticipated. We, we mentioned that earlier, but it is important to reiterate again that we need to be good neighbors and we need to clear our sidewalks for folks, for residents that are trying to, to just walk past. We've had a couple slip and fall accidents, one that I'm aware of already. Whether you're a business owner or a resident, we need to be respectful neighbors. We are a walkable community, whether it's 80 degrees out or 20 degrees out, and we still need to make sure that we're honoring that. And we, it does say in our ordinances that you have 12 hours to, to do that. So let's make sure that we are doing... 12 hours to do that, so let's make sure that we are doing that, so we're trying to be, you know, keep everybody as safe as possible and respectful. And lastly, this is perfect timing, I've got just a couple minutes, I need to apologize, it's my face, it's what's going on here, so you can see my contribution to the Movember is more of the Fu Manchu style, I promise you, it is better than if I just do that. That does not mean that my wife or my children are happy at all with it, they're quite dismayed with the way that I look, but the important thing is, it is November, we know we're in the month of November, and it is awareness campaign for men's health, to change the face of men's health through awareness, various, not only mental or physical, but also mental ailments. We've got a couple weeks left, and then it'll go away, but hopefully, if nothing else, I hope it does serve as a reminder to get regular checkups, detect, you know, being able to detect warning signs ahead of time, you know, before it gets to the point where it's too late, certainly for physical and mental maladies, so again, this is the month of November, we were trying to raise awareness for men's health, and this is my unfortunate contribution to that. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protam with support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. The first meeting of the 38th council, November 18th, 2019, is adjourned.